All good?
It's six.
I'll call the Wednesday, April 12th Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Role call.
Roger Froman.
Sean Fow.
Charles Smallwood.
Catherine Nyberg.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonilla.
Okay, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, look for a motion of approval of agenda.
I move that the agenda be approved, Ezra.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda approved. Approval of the minutes from the January 11th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I would like to see a change on that. I did not nominate Sylvia Henry.
Catherine, I rewatched the video after we talked and you did nominate.
I thought you nominated Sylvia.
Yeah, I rewatched the video because you said something and I wanted to make sure it was correct. So that's what happened.
Is that what happened?
Yep.
I don't make.
Okay, with that, is it, do you hear a motion? Approval of the minutes?
Prove the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. I'll look for a motion to open the public hearing. Consider request for allowance keeping chickens residential properties. Okay.
You have to make the motion and vote and do all that.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion?
Do we hear a motion, yeah. I mean, okay, so nobody's going, no public is going to speak on the topic, right?
Yeah, we just have to close the regular hearing and open.
I would like to make an observation for us, okay?
Yeah.
I spent about a week and a half doing deep dive research.
Hang on, we got it, we have to close the meeting and then open the public hearing first.
Motion to close the, or.
Close the regular.
Open the public.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Sorry about that.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, at 7:04, I closed the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and opened the public hearing chickens in residential properties. I'd first like to turn it over to Bob so we can give the overview and then we can.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman, and Planning Commission members. As indicated in your, the memos in your packet, the City Council has asked the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing related to the keeping of chickens within residential districts in the city, specifically, I'm assuming, to obtain feedback and, once that feedback is received, to provide a comment to the City Council. The Council has also asked the Planning Commission to look at an example ordinance that was prepared for the city of Delano, which is included in your packet, and also provide feedback on that. Planning Commission is probably aware this was last considered in 2001, the keeping of chickens in residential districts. At that time, the Planning Commission and Council chose not to amend the ordinance to make an allowance for chickens in residential districts. Also, it kind of goes back to my time, I just mentioned this to Chuck, I was here in 2010, we considered, or chickens was considered, and again, I was not supported by the Planning Commission or Council. The zoning ordinance includes poultry in its list of farm animals, which are not allowed in residential districts. Therefore, to accommodate that activity, it'd be necessary to amend the zoning ordinance and establish various requirements that would pertain to that use and also procedures and so forth. Cities seem to be split on this issue. If you've done research, many cities prohibit them, such as Montrose has done in the past. Also, there are many cities that make an accommodation for them. Within your packet, there is kind of an example of things that are regulated as part of these chicken ordinances. I won't go through them, but just pretty much every aspect of the keeping of chickens is addressed typically in these zoning ordinances or zoning ordinance amendments. What is difficult sometimes for cities, at least in our experience, is a lot of times the people that are in favor of this are well-intended and have the ability to maintain their chicken coops and are in it for the long term. However, oftentimes, there's people that think this is a great idea and kind of peters out and they're not keeping up with it and you deal with code enforcement issues associated with that activity. So that's kind of one of the downsides. There's both, both memos provided in your packet are reiterations of 2021 memos, so the thought was that no need to kind of reiterate the same material. But the second memo specifically lists reasons chickens are typically not made, not accommodated in residential districts. Some of these are neighborhood complaints, which relate to the appearance of the coop, odors, noise, increases in predator animals, such as fox, coyotes, cats, et cetera, that are drawn to the chickens, abandonment, which I indirectly reference, where the coops are not kept up. And then there's the management issue, where a lot of times, particularly small towns, don't have the staff to enforce the codes related to this activity. The memo also references some local communities, mentioned the city of Delano, they do make an allowance for chickens in residential districts, subject to some specific regulations. I won't get into those, but at this time, I think that's the second step. The first step is, is this something you want to potentially allow and then you would get into the details of regulation. Monticello allows chickens in residential districts and their experience has been mixed. As mentioned, you know, there are some people that are well-intended and keep their coops up and others who kind of lose interest or the ability to keep the chicken coops up in accordance with city requirements. The city of Buffalo does not allow chickens in residential zoning districts. Also, just for informational purposes, the city of Minneapolis does something somewhat unique in that they, if neighboring property owners are okay with the idea of backyard chickens, that's a basis for allowing it. And that, by state law, that only applies to cities over 100,000 people, but in general, we're not, I mean, on the planning side of things, we don't support that idea because it's very subjective. You could have one neighbor that thinks it's great and one neighbor that doesn't under the same exact condition, so we're not in favor of that approach. So, again, the City Council has asked you to hold a public hearing for the purpose of gaining input regarding this potential activity and also passing along any comments you have, may have on. So with that, I'm open for questions.
Questions for Bob?
I guess my question would be, when you say people like lose interest, I mean, what's the real drawback there? They just get rid of their chickens and they have a coop that's sitting there?
Yeah, and then the feed is, I mean, feed is, isn't stored in, is supposed to be stored indoors, feed is stored outdoors, which draws in animals. Chicken coops are kept clean, there's, you know, chicken droppings become a problem. Basically, not adhering to the requirements that are in the ordinance becomes the issue. I mean, it takes work to do this.
So, I mean, is it an issue where like if people don't keep it, the smell affects their neighbors?
Yeah, I mean, typically, most cities that are smaller cities don't have like a code enforcement officer, so they operate on a complaint basis. So, for instance, I'm assuming here in Montrose, that, I mean, if the city receives a complaint, the city's obligated to follow up and make sure they meet the requirements. There are.
Kind of like you say, asking your two next door neighbors if you can do it, in a way, right? After the fact, sort of?
Yeah, yeah, indirectly, yeah, if they don't have a problem with it, yeah, but, I mean, you want people to meet the requirements of the ordinances.
Well, don't hens just only lay for three or four, lay eggs for three or four years? And isn't that true? It was when we had chickens, when I was growing up.
Yeah.
And then they went to slaughter, then you had stew.
Yeah, that is, that is true.
That is true. So they're not, it's not like having a dog or a cat, you know? And most people want, why do they want chickens for eggs? Is that the primary reason or pets?
Well, what we hear is that it's educational for young kids, you hear that a lot?
Well, yes, that is true, but that's kind of individual choices too. That's not what the majority would want, that would be a minority.
I think the majority is looking for eggs.
Eggs, yeah.
Yep.
And you cannot sell those eggs?
Correct.
Well, I think it's a health issue too. I know as, we weren't allowed to go in the chicken coops when we were going, growing up because of the manure and we had a washing station right outside, but we didn't live in the city either. And any boots you had on that were out in the farm, chicken coop or whatever, were taken off and things were washed. And your feet were cleaned before you came in and little children were never allowed out there. My father said there were roundworms and pinworms that would come in the house and anyone crawling on the floor, where animals would be subjected to health issues.
Yeah, that was listed in the drawbacks.
Yeah. So those are the drawbacks and I have mostly, I mean, chickens are great, I'm not, but it takes a lot of work and it's, they don't belong in suburban lots, in my view.
I did receive an email from resident Andy in Bailey Kraus, 943 Breckenridge Lane. They are pro chickens, they were not able to attend the meeting tonight, but wanted to say that they would be in favor of allowing chickens.
Say that again.
I got an email from an Andy in Bailey Kraus at 943 Breckenridge Lane, they were not able to attend the meeting, but they are in favor of allowing chickens.
I also got two, that was one email that I forwarded to Jess, but I got two more right before I got here. One from Caitlin and Ben Ostrander, 905 Wyatt, also in favor of chickens, and Mike and Amanda Green, 820 Cole, also in favor of chickens. Didn't receive anything.
They were in favor, you said?
Yep, didn't receive anything negative.
Well, I would say that's the minority and I think, you know, as stewards of the city, we have to look at the majority, what the majority want.
Either of you like to step forward or?
Sure.
Okay.
You want me to state my name? Michelle Otto, 205 Garfield Avenue. We come to this every year and I thank you guys for, once again, doing it, but as you guys said, chickens, I had a neighbor for years that had chickens and their chicken poo went over the fence and in my pond every day. That's where it went. They didn't take care of it. I mean, I didn't hear the chickens, I saw the chickens, but that's where my pond looks horrible and smells horrible because all the chicken poo went into the pond. So, I mean, I get it, I mean, like you guys said, what are you gonna get, three eggs here and there? It's up to you guys, I guess, you know, if you want to move it forward or whatnot, but I get people send emails, but nobody shows up to say what they need to say. So you got, I think we should take that into consideration too, so.
Thank you.
Well, I also have heard the comment that people need to provide for their families. Well, $6 will buy you two dozen eggs in today's society and, you know, I just don't think that's a valid reason for.
Three years ago, it was a dollar fifty for a dozen eggs. Now we're at $6 for two dozen eggs, I mean.
Well, that's because of the flu, you know, the bird flu too, and anyone harboring chickens at home, they're going to be subjected to.
I'd say it's more along the lines of inflation than bird flu. I mean, just look over the past year, year and a half, I mean.
Fluctuated.
Yeah, it's gone skyrocketed. You know, you spend three, 350 for a dozen eggs, I mean, it's a little ridiculous.
But what is the price of a beer at a local tavern? $6, so.
I don't see how that's relevant.
Well, I don't either, but I'm providing for your family, two dozen eggs is equivalent to a beer.
Does Delano have someone that is in charge of monitoring all these regulations that I'm seeing here, or is it just if a neighbor complains, they send someone out?
I don't know for sure, I don't think they're proactive in code enforcement.
Right.
We'll also say that this issue is going to Buffalo's council on Monday too, so it is something that they're looking at either adopting or not adopting also, so.
Roger, you said you.
Sure, I'll toss in my two cents worth. Having spent about 50 hours researching the topic, pretty exhaustively, and I invoked AI tool, ChatGPT, to go off and do some homework for us and went through dozens of documents and on down the line. I wanted to offer for us a useful paper, a useful site, that, you know, this is of all, everything I've read and everything I've researched, this is the most reasonable paper on the topic that, you know, trying to come up with some kind of model ordinance for chickens for a community. And so I would like to, you know, leave it with the committee that it appears that we have no one, you know, coming forward today and asking for us to move forward on this and so be it, but I hate to lose this, you know, if I disappear, truck hits me, at least you have a copy of this. And there's a lot of homework done on the topic and it's a very well-written document. I mean, this is an exhaustive document. You know, things like they went through the 100 largest cities in America, all have some kind of chicken policies, except Detroit. But, but anyway.
Are you saying the top 100 cities don't permit chickens except for Detroit?
Well, basically, they, they found that the larger the city, the more the probability that they would permit chickens.
Okay.
Now, we could debate whether that, I mean, the paper goes into it, but sometimes it's because they have the resources to assure compliance and monitor and whatever. But their model ordinance, you know, if we were to pass an ordinance to permit chicken, I would suggest that we take a look at this model ordinance at the end of this document. Because, you know, 50 hours of homework comes back and says, of everything else is garbage, this is the best document that I've seen on the topic. And the model ordinance makes sense and they make the arguments, so if we were to have a chicken policy, then I suggest that there's 50 hours of homework behind this.
Okay.
Let's, you know, so, but it's, it's kind of a moot point, I suspect.
Well, why do you say it's moot?
Well, we don't have an advocate coming out and saying we want this.
I mean, we did have people at least email, I mean, I'm not, we shouldn't discount that fact.
Okay.
I'm just making a, I'm making a point here, it's just, just because they're not here, I mean, life gets in the way for a lot of us, but they did take the time to reach out and say, hey, I'm, I'm for this, so.
Okay.
Even if it was, you know, against it, you know, I mean, I just, I don't think you can, you know, discount that.
Okay, so taking in that light, then, you know, based on the model ordinance, I would, I would suggest that if we were to have something like this, that it actually could make sense for Montrose.
I kind of, I just saw the article come through today, so I read, I kind of skimmed through it.
Do you all have a copy of that article?
Sure.
Could you kind of just give us a synopsis?
I will give you a quick, a quick synopsis. Based, you know, first of all, quantity of chickens and minimum of two or four, not more than six. And the reason why is chickens associate with each other. And so if you have fewer than four, you can run into a population and chickens being cruel to each other. And then over six becomes, again, manageability on the other end. So a policy of a number of chickens, four to six. The paper goes through and talks about, and that's called the flock. They go through the lot size, they recommend, and they make the good argument of, don't base it on lot size. Do base it on setbacks. And as a rule, setbacks of 25 feet away from any neighbor's windows, doors, or decks. So neighbors are not exposed, so at least 25 feet for both the coop and for any run. It does go through nothing, not in front yard. Sanitation requirements, they were going through, you know, odor free, basically, the changes in technology from 10, 15 years ago to now is kind of like the cat litter box. It used to be the litter box, you know, the cat litter box was smelled. Now the cat litter technology has gotten to the point that cat litter is reasonably neutral. And so the same kind of thing is starting to happen with chicken coops. But if they do that and it's not, does not present an odor problem, then that's.
So you're saying there's, there's certain products you can buy?
You can do that, right.
The ordinance that if you're gonna have chickens, you'd have to use the odor free one?
Well.
Or whatever you're talking about?
You just, you know, it has a language in here that you don't want to be offensive to neighbors.
Right.
You want to be sanitary, I mean, it's common sense stuff, but they, but they do a better job of wording it than me. They talk about enclosures and the issues of, of, you know, how it would look and, you know, fit in the neighborhood. The issue of permits, which is a catch point, do you require a permitting process, much like, do we require dog tags or not? And there's a cost associated with that, there's an overhead for the city to maintain a permitting process. And they make the argument, you can do it one way or the other, either way. The issue of slaughtering should not be done in public, if you were permitted slaughtering, then not done in public. Even to the point of roosters, which to me is a screaming no, okay, having grown up in situations with roosters, they choose at 4:00 AM to do the loudest call. And, and so they, but they talk about conjugal, 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 come on, help me out, C-O-N-J-U-G-A-L, conjugal? Conjugal visit of a rooster and, you know, you have a conjugal visit of a rooster to be able to have fertilized eggs for, and I would extend it to say from eight in the morning to eight at night, but overnight, they're not outside. And, and on down the line, so I mean, there's a lot of innovative thinking.
What does it say about, about waste, like with her situation where, is there something in there about how to get rid of the waste?
Well, there's, an argument can be made that if you do it right, okay, there's, I'm gonna answer your question with two pieces. And one of the things was interesting that early on in the paper, they're talking about the average life of a chicken is seven years or more. So having a chicken is like having a dog, it's, it's not a one-year thing or two-year thing or three, whatever, it's, it's commitment. So you're in for the haul. And so the other piece is, is that if you do it right, the, the chicken litter and all that kind of stuff can actually be used as fertilizer. So.
For plants?
For plants. Pardon me, so the issue then is, and the same kind of thing, they recommend that, you know, there's a potential of attracting varmints, right, attracting rats, if you spread the seed out onto the ground. So they recommend that have the seed in a trough. So you're not, you know, taking dog food or cat food or chicken food and putting it out on the ground and attracting varmints, which just, it makes sense. So that's why I was saying, you know, this, well-written. And so if we were to move forward, I, I offer this as at least one piece of in the pot for, for looking at it. So, but that's the highlight. You know, and of all the other stuff that I've read, even, even the AI program failed the test. You know, when you take the AI programs recommendations and they come out with six rules and all this kind of stuff, but the reality versus the rationale that's documented in here, AI failed. So, okay, so anyway.
All right, well, thank you, Roger. Appreciate it.
For what's worth.
Would you say that the Minneapolis chicken ordinance is based on that model?
No.
Well, it would be.
No. They go through, they go, they talk cities, you know, this is a well-written paper, it talks about.
Do we have copies of it? Do I have a copy?
Yeah, there's copies out there and.
I, yeah, I emailed them out earlier.
Yep.
Well, I know the Minneapolis city ordinance.
Okay, I mean.
Was developed in, to help the immigrant.
The primary thing.
Also, so they could sell at farmers markets, I mean, you know, they have thousands of immigrants and.
Right, that's another set of issues.
But we're not, we're not Minneapolis.
It does seem a little backwards to me though, that you have chickens in the city, but not all, I mean, we're kind of in the, and we're kind of like farm country, I mean.
Oh, really not, we're suburban. We used to be, we used to be a cornfield, but.
This ain't a suburb.
I mean, if, if things economically change significantly and, and, you know, feeding the family and egg production and all that becomes a matter of life and death or, you know, becomes a real issue, then I will probably revisit this topic. Am I convinced that we have that problem today?
You know, this isn't one, or one era either.
Yeah, I mean, they make the point. Yeah, I mean, they make the point, World War II.
That was the social media post that was published in our community. It was a nineteen eighteen. World War I poster.
Well, they talk about World War I and World War II and that in World War II, the policy, the official policy from the Department of Agriculture was a chicken per person, basically.
Right.
For a family.
That was a hundred years, that was a hundred years.
And because they were talking about egg count of, you know, and on down the line. I mean, it, it, there's a, there's a lot of research that's captured in here that, you know, it was nowhere else. This was fresh for me. It was not, you know, one way or the other, but I thought it was well done.
Even in the World War I era, they had chain markets. I mean, they had, they had King Cullen and Ralphs and A and P. I mean, those are all pre nineteen twenty. So people could get eggs then too. It's just that the economic situation was totally different to it is now.
So, anyway, that's my two cents.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and.
Can I do one more then?
Okay.
When you talked about, you know, you can kind of compare them to dogs or cats or whatever. We have a hard time taking care of dogs in the city and let alone cleaning up after the dogs. So what's it gonna do with chickens? And then we have a workshop coming up that talks about code enforcement, what, in two weeks? Because we have a hard time doing code enforcement. So how are we going to? How, what's the plan for code enforcement on chickens?
Well, we repealed the rental ordinance. Probably not relevant. But we repealed the rental ordinance because we did not have the capability to enforce it. And here we're gonna have another situation. We don't have the staff to enforce the code.
Right. I mean, this, the staffing, the time it takes to do it, the follow-up, just, just everything. It's a lot of work.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, you know, kind of take that into consideration too.
Yeah, I did it full-time for Brooklyn Center and there was four of us.
Yeah.
And.
It's a lot.
Did chickens do your chickens though?
Code enforcement. There were chickens too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, Sam can do it Saturdays. Not a problem.
I mean, like I said, we have a, a workshop coming up where we're talking about how do we continue with code enforcement? When we don't have staff. We don't have the means to do what it takes to get it done, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Well, I mean, it seems to me like there, you would be no need for code enforcement unless there's a complaint from a neighbor, right?
Yeah, but how far do you let it go?
I mean, constructing something on their property is gonna blow the whole neighborhood up. But I mean, for chickens, I mean, wouldn't that, isn't that, can you have that as a code enforcement? If, if someone complains, that would be the, would it initiate it or is that?
But if you wait for a complaint, it's already too late.
Why, why would that be? Because you, oh, because they, because you can't.
It's already gotten to a point where it's a problem.
Okay.
Probably a pretty severe problem.
Okay.
Now, how do we go in and tell the people, okay, clean this up and get rid of the chickens? Because you're not doing anything to follow the rules.
Yeah. Well, I mean, when they get a, would they, if they get a permit, wouldn't they be agreeing to that, to that?
Well, they agree to it, but if they stick to it, you've got a driver's license and you stay at fifty-five, right? Okay.
Right. But yeah, no, I'm just saying like, if they got a permit, if they had to get a permit, well, that's a whole cost too, right? Because I mean, didn't you say in there that they kind of were like, you don't.
Well, yeah, they talk about permits and if you, if you do have permits, it recommends twenty-five dollar, you know, reasonable fees. And because permitting, the whole ecosystem of permits and enforcement, each of those are a cost center.
You're gonna spend well over the twenty-five bucks you got for the permit.
So how, how hard is it, like, if someone had chickens and they weren't following the rules and it stunk up their neighbors? I mean, how hard, what, what's the cost to the city to go out there and say, you gotta get rid of this stuff? Or how do they, what, what power does the city to have?
The wheels grind slow. Exactly. You've got to give them so many warnings.
Okay.
In writing, then you'd have to take it to the next level to get enforcement above and beyond what the city can do. Because technically that's private property.
Police come in and tell them they gotta get rid of their chickens?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had that on a few occasions where I had to call an officer in.
And then there's like, there's a.
And then he calls animal control and then animal control comes.
Right.
And the kids are screaming because they're taking their chickens.
Right.
And it de-escalates, you know.
Disposal of the animal. I mean, it just, it goes on. It, it's not simple.
No.
I mean, I personally like the idea that people ought to be able to have chickens on their own land. But at the same time, like, I don't, I don't feel like, like, my sister had chickens in Minneapolis. And what she told me was the amount of time, energy, and money you spend on chickens.
It's cheaper to go buy eggs.
Cheaper to go buy eggs.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Yeah, you get the startup of building the coop.
For me, that's not really an argument of the, you know, it's, you need chickens. It's, it's more of, hey, I, I, it's private property. I want to have a chicken. But then it's like all this other stuff, the ordinances and the neighbors and.
Yeah.
I just don't have.
And we already have a dog problem where.
Yeah.
We've already had four stray dogs and we don't have a dog catcher.
Right.
And there's no open season.
Right. And, and, and so this was all brought up based on a handful of people requesting to have chickens? Or a large amount of people to have chickens? Or, I mean, how big a group are we talking?
All I was told is a small amount. A small number of people showed interest.
Okay.
Did you see, you guys got free emails?
Yep.
We have thirteen hundred households approximately.
Is that what there is? Thirteen hundred?
Approximately.
Okay.
So point oh, oh, oh.
So one percent of the population wants to have chickens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna close the public hearing so we can take a vote.
Make a motion.
Do you have a motion for that?
Pardon?
A motion to close the public hearing and.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at, if I can read that, thirty-eight, seven thirty-eight? And reopen the planning and zoning commission meeting to put this to a vote. Your motion on either allowance or non-al allowance of.
I think the, the first vote should just be, yeah, whether or not you want to move forward with looking more into this and, and digging into what an ordinance might look like for the city.
Okay. Anybody be interested in continuing on, doing more research and?
I think, sorry, but I think we kind of did that twenty twenty-one with the Delano ordinance. So I don't know if it really needs to be, if we need to look at that part again.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a bunch of them floating out there from the last two decades.
Yeah, exactly. And like I said, I mean, Del, Delano's got a pretty strong ordinance and we looked at it two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, is it not on? Can you not hear me?
They can't hear me. Maybe it was covered.
It might have been covered. So I, I really, I don't know if you need to relook at the ordinance. I guess that's my thought on it.
Okay.
Because again, we did look at it two years ago and highly doubt much has changed on their ordinance.
Well, you basically have decided on the format of the Delano chicken ordinance.
I think if it was to be adopted, I think that would be.
The one that would, you would be forward with.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we just need to.
Does Delano have animal control? How do they enforce?
Not, not that I'm aware of. They don't have code enforcement either, so.
They don't have code enforcement or animal control?
I mean, I, I, it seems to me like the, the, the biggest thing is what, what's the cost gonna be to the city? Because if the, if the cost to the other taxpayers that don't have chickens.
Yeah, we all observed the cost.
Any cost to, I mean, it just doesn't seem like it's fair to have a, something where, you know, Bob wants to have a chicken and everyone else has to, to pay to.
Yeah.
Monitor all this stuff. But then the question is, is that really even a reality? Is it really that big of an issue? Or maybe it is.
Well, it is. I mean, an ordinance is the law.
Well, no, I'm saying is, are chickens that big of an issue? I mean, if your neighbor has a chicken, do you even notice it? Is what I'm saying. I've never lived next to anyone that had chickens, so I'm asking.
I have, it's messy.
You guys live next, did you hear them? Did you smell them?
I could smell them because like I said, their poop was going into the pond, so.
I mean, all people are not diligent with their pets.
Yeah.
Right.
And you have no control over them.
Yeah. So we just need a motion to.
I, I, I would put up a motion to, to pass this along into the future and not.
Well, we're trying to put this, it keeps.
This has been up three or four times since.
So we're either.
About every year or two, it comes back.
Okay, well, that's probably not a bad thing.
I mean, this is the second one since I have been on council.
Second chicken?
Yeah, second chicken, so twice in three years.
But three since I've lived.
I think we need to play over.
Four, five.
I like that idea.
I mean, it just keeps recurring and recurring.
I mean, it, it's, it's not something that I think you can put to bed forever, but.
No.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think if we're given interest.
And they think we're rural and we should have chickens.
Yeah.
Well, I could kind of understand that. I do understand that because we are kind of rural. Because there's a lot of rural in this town.
Yes, but it's suburban lots. I mean, we're not acreage, you know.
That's true. But I would motion to, to put it off for another two years or whatever the, I mean, what, what are the two options? Either move forward with looking more into it or not?
Well, I think it's making a, putting it to council whether we would recommend having chickens or not having chickens is what.
Okay.
We need a motion for, for now. I mean, if it comes back up, council will tell us, okay, we got an interest in this. Let's readdress it.
What is the wording you want? What is the wording?
Um, whether we would recommend to or recommend not to. Look, have a court.
With allowing chickens?
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we could never have chickens.
No, it's just for right now.
It says there's never, or it would be an order that says no chickens.
No, they just say for now, we're not going to allow it. That doesn't mean somewhere down the line, it wouldn't come back again for further review.
Yeah, I think that we, I would motion to, to do that. I don't even know how to word it, but.
I could, go ahead. Maybe something like, the planning commission recommends that the city not, at this time, amended zoning ordinance to make, to accommodate chickens in residential zoning districts.
That sounds perfect.
That's why you're here.
Is it just chickens or farm animals?
No, this is just addressing chickens.
This was just chickens, so the other part of the ordinance stays no farm animals.
I move his wording.
Yeah.
Cut, paste, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Roger?
Aye.
Aye.
I wrote aye.
Aye.
Okay, zero, that we leave it as it is. We make the recommendation to council. Uh, moving on then, old business. Do we have any old business that's outstanding? Okay. Any updates on new business?
I don't believe there's any development or other updates at this time. Well, the North Ridge development, they are currently, they have submitted a new tree plan since we amended the tree ordinance so that they can get their developer agreement changed a bit. So they can change their plans for their tree removal part, but that, that's about it for developments. That should come before council in May to reapprove the developer agreement for them.
Okay.
What about, they haven't said anything about building that bridge and having other eggs on the other side?
I, we have not heard from Creekside Hollow.
They haven't said a word about it?
We have not heard from them. No.
No, there's. Okay, with that, the next meeting is going to be on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. Due to staff training. It was adjusted. So that will be Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, at the community center here at seven. And then I'd look for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned at seven forty-five.